Welcome, everyone. Today is June 15th. It is 6:32 and this is the Cushinget Planning Board. We are being recorded for the YouTube video, our YouTube channel. We are also live via Zoom and I think we're actually on cable as well. Can I get a motion to open the planning board meeting?
I make a motion to open the meeting. Second?
Oh, in favor? Aye. We have a full quorum. We have one on Zoom. Yes, we need to roll call, right?
Yes, exactly, roll call vote.
Yep. Let's all introduce ourselves real quick, please.
Steve Boucher, member.
Mark Francois, chairman.
Ryan Dishamps, member.
Rick Ellis, vice chairman.
Dave Divignan, member, and joined in by Zoom.
Very good, thank you. Next on the agenda is the minutes for May 11th. Has everybody had the opportunity to review the minutes from the May 11th meeting? We were... We were all in attendance? We were all in attendance, yes. Does anybody have any issues, questions, remarks regarding the May 11th meeting?
Make a motion to accept the meetings from May 11th to 2023?
We have a motion. Can I get a second?
My second, Tim.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Let's do a roll call vote. Steve was...
Steve Boucher, member. Aye.
Mark, chair. Aye.
Ryan Dishamps. Aye.
Rick Ellis. Aye.
Dave Divignan. Aye.
unanimous. Let me just sign this real quick, I'll get it out of the way. Correspondents to review, there are none to review. Okay, next is discussion and other topics. I am going to hand this over to the vice chair, Rick, and I will need to recuse myself. I will return after the vote.
Anytime a piece of land is in forest land or farmland protection, they are entitled to reduce among their taxes. Out of farmland or woodland, they have to request, or the town has got the right of first refusal. The Conservation Commission gives their recommendation to the board of selectmen and the planning board gives their recommendation to the board of selectmen. In all the time I've been on the board, we've not had any piece of land that was so valuable to the town that the town was willing to pay for it. And I don't see that this piece of property is any different, myself. I don't know if anybody else has got any further discussion on it.
Nope, other than I looked at it real quick and it's better on a tax roll than it is.
Do you want an increase in taxes because you're paying for buying that piece of land?
Right. It's better on a tax roll.
It's better on the tax roll is right. That's my opinion also.
I agree.
I agree. Dave Divignan, is he... Dave, are you voting on this one? No?
No, I'm abstaining. I didn't file a disclosure form with the clerk's office. I didn't have time, so I'll abstain from the conversation. Thank you for asking.
Okay. Entain a motion to not recommend purchase of the land to the board of selectmen.
I make a motion not to recommend the land to the board of selectmen.
Second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The planning board does not recommend that the town purchase this piece of land that's in... Is it farm or forest? I just wanted to say, I forget now. Let's see. Anyway, the vote is not to recommend purchase of the land and to not take up the... and not take up the right of first refusal. So, that's that issue. Decommissioning bond and solar special permit request extension. Come on back in.
Oh, before we get to the... The next one is the new town decommissioning bond developed by the town council. This isn't really need a vote. This was just something for us to take a look at. These were all emailed to you earlier this week. Basically, it's a decommissioning bond layout for the town. So, anybody, any solar developer that wants to do a bond for the decommissioning, this is the application they're gonna have to fill out and use. With that being said, though, if a solar company also wants to go through their own bond company and they have a different form, they'll fill out this form, and they might submit a second form. That form will in turn go to town council, get their approval, and then, once they get approval, it'll come back to us. But they wanted us to just take a look at this and see if we had any issues with it. Really don't need to take a vote, from what I'm told. The chair motion to... To... Of advisement for the town treasurer collective that is agreeable, is acceptable as the form. Does anybody?
I would recommend that we put it on file.
Yeah.
And when we get a new town planner and a new proposal, that we call it out and show the developer that that's our recommended form of performance bond.
Very good.
So, the other thing is, you know, with these bonds, this one literally says performance bond on the top.
Yep.
Okay. Peter, this is basically probably, it's probably tip of tap language, being a decommissioned bond. Okay? However, this performance bond thing right there is something that I think that we should somehow incorporate. So, when it comes down to the end of these thing, these... When they're coming online, that all their screenings implies everything else. And if they fail, if their vegetation fails, all their screening, we have something to hold them to as far as a performance goes. They're two separate, I would think they're two separate things. One's a decommissioning.
Right.
One's actually a performance bond, okay? I don't know how that would get incorporated or if we can incorporate it.
Performance bond would have to be pretty much put in, in the beginning of the project.
Exactly. Yep. Separately from... It's separate from this, yep. You know, and I don't know how that would get incorporated. Basically, if that's between the landowner and the proponent of putting it up or if the town, because of the special permit, can request a performance bond.
We certainly can, you know, in terms of erosion control and in terms of...
Yes.
A bond on the proposed screening that's going to happen.
Yep.
Seeing as that's been pretty...
Actually did that on...
Yeah.
Wind lane. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Well, that's something to definitely keep in mind for any future projects that start up.
Okay.
Okay. Next, the solar special permit extension request. 540R Main Street, Cushinget, Mass. The engineer is Atlantic Design Engineers. The plans and the company documents are available for inspection at the town clerk's office, Parting Way's building, 130 Main Street, first floor, during regular business hour. Is there anybody here for 540R Main Street?
Yes, sir. You have Ed Switzer. I'm dialing in from Catalyze. We are the project owner. We acquired the project from TJA about last year when we made this, excuse me, request for the extension.
Okay. If I read this correctly, your special permit expires on July 15th and you are here requesting a two-year extension to the special solar permit? Why should we grant you an extension for your permit?
Sure. So, we are requesting this extension, permit extension because the project, you know, as stated in the petition, has been understunnered the study of the utility for honestly the past five years. We recently were issued the... So, as part of their review, EverSource kind of changed their policy and started doing these group studies, which looks at projects in more of an aggregate fashion versus just individually and looks at their impacts to substations while they look at the kind of entire infrastructure network. Now, you know, long story short, that study, you know, had been going on for the past, you know, since they submitted, I think, back in 2018. So, it was, you know, a pretty lengthy undertaking. And obviously, we weren't able to move forward with the project until we got the approval from the utility. And so, you know, I guess, really, it was just kind of a mistiming, I think, as far as when the project went forward with the special use permit, you know, in combination with the utility drag its feet. I think that from what we've been told by the utility itself, as far as upgrades, they are, you know, hoping to get them done. I asked a couple of weeks ago what their schedule is and, you know, their response was a can. We have until 2027 to complete the upgrades. So, you know, I think we're just looking to extend our approvals for as long as possible to give, you know, the utility the time to complete their study as well as, you know, give us enough time to get ready and, you know, keep things moving along for the property owners who have also been extremely patient during this entire permitting process and approval process with the utility.
What have you actually done in terms of work on this parcel other than submit plans to do it? And of course, you said you put in a requested EverSource for an interconnect permit. I mean, the other... The other... We did issue some extensions for a group of projects, but there was a substantial amount of work that was done and is underway in terms of building them. I believe all of them had building permits issued, the ones that we issued extensions for. Have you had a building permit issued for construction of this project as of yet?
We have not. If we had applied for a building permit, we wouldn't... I don't think we'd be seeking an extension now because that would satisfy taking an action on the special use permit. So, you know, we're doing this, you know, in lieu of applying for building permits. You know, and as far as work that's been done on the site, obviously, you noted the interconnection approval. We've gotten a wetland delineation and site survey that was approved a couple of years ago and is still valid from the Conservation Commission so that that wetland approval is invalid. And, you know, we've applied for the incentive from the state, so we have that. That's been locked in. And now, it's really just awaiting final feedback from the utility on their upgrade schedule so that we can time our procurement and construction schedule appropriately.
So, I have a question for you.
Was that the study as well on the site? Sorry, I shouldn't have mentioned that.
Okay. So, when you say that conservation wetland delineation is still valid, as of when, have you been back in front of the conservation?
Have they issued an order of conditions yet?
They issued a... Here, let me pull it right up.
And a date?
A delineation is one thing, but an order of conditions for the project is, that's another question altogether. I think that's what you were asking. Do you have something to... I mean, that's the final approval from wetlands. Correct. The conservation question. Have you had an order of conditions issued for the project?
We got an order of resource area delineation.
Have you even applied? Have you even applied for a notice of... Have you even filed a notice of intent to try and get an order of conditions issued?
We have the order of resource area delineation and then, we have the ORAD. It was reported that states...
Yeah, again, so you have not filed, you really haven't gone forward with conservation to get this project approved from their end. There's been no notice of intent filed and no order of conditions issued. I mean, the only real permit that you've requested, a special permit from the planning commission, and you've requested an interconnection permit from EverSource, but that's it. And you received the special permit from the planning commission. That's really all that's... And as you said, you've got the wetlands delineated, but that's all you've done on this project so far.
So, would the RDA that they issued not satisfy? Isn't it an RDA or a notice of intent?
Well, a request for resource delineation is not the plans in front of the commission so that they can look at it and determine if there are any impacts on the wetlands from this project. And there certainly has been no order of conditions issued, has there?
To my knowledge, I do not believe so, but I'll have to look into it.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a few questions?
Please.
All right. So, it sounds like if... Mr. Switzer can confirm this, but it sounds like they didn't order an ORAD, which is a filing to lock down the wetland line and determine that it's accurate. And then, they file an RDA for the reasons that they are not close enough into the buffer zone to require an order of conditions. If that's accurate, then they've vetted it through the conservation. That'd be good for three years. I don't know if that's what it sounded like to me. However...
But has the commission actually acted on that request to determine that no further action from them is required?
If they file an RDA, they would have gotten a negative determination so that they don't have to file a notice of intent. Basically, if they're on the fringe or out of the buffer zone or just on the fringe, you can get a determination of applicability that says a negative determination, which doesn't require you to file a notice of intent.
Yep.
But the big however I want to point out is, the question is, Mr. Switzer, we have a stormwater bylaw. The stormwater board currently, used to be the planning board, was deferred to the Conservation Commission. And have you ever applied for and obtained a stormwater permit?
So, we submitted the stormwater report with our special use permit back in 2021?
What abouts was that in 2021? Like, you know, the timing of the year? Was it April?
Yeah, I'm looking at the stormwater permit because it was the special permit and the stormwater permit were combined into one.
Okay. So, at that time, the planning board was the stormwater board?
And it was approved on 7/15/21 and then signed on 8/19/21.
Okay. I don't know... I don't know the timeline for when it was transferred. The authority was transferred from the planning board to the... I guess the bottom line is, what I'm trying to tell you is, if you never obtain the stormwater permit, I think you're subject to or required to get a stormwater permit from the stormwater board. So, I'm of the opinion that, and I stated this, if you look back at our last meeting or two, we've had a few, several requests for extensions. I'm one board member, but I'm of the opinion, if there's no construction started, EverSource can, as they told you, I feel bad for you, that 2027, I mean, four years from now, I just can't... You know, to me, come back to us, reapply when you have a connection permit and you have, you know, you're ready to get that building permit because otherwise, we're just, we can't continue. And then, my thing, we shouldn't continue these permits and just on and on and on, you know, and we have to draw the line somewhere. And I think we've been consistent in the last couple of meetings with a lot of these requests where we granted permits, extensions for those who actually started physically on the ground construction versus those who are waiting for EverSource. We all know EverSource, they're not in favor of your projects. You know, it takes away from their bottom line and they're gonna drag their feet as long as they want and they may end up not giving you what you want. So, as far as I'm concerned, I really, I just can't see granting the extension. Thank you.
Sure, I appreciate that. And I guess, could someone please explain to me why we would be required to extend a special permit if we have a building permit? To me, it's, the special permit ceases to, you know, have any effect once the building permits have been issued.
Do you have a building permit?
No, we haven't. But if we're gonna have our extension denied, we can, we'll try and pull one, right? Since we still have a valid special use permit.
I would say that's a question for town council, Mr. Chairman.
Or the building inspector. I mean...
Will the building inspector even grant a building permit without...
Was there any kind of permit issued for stormwater either from this board or...
Yes, the special permit and stormwater management permit were combined in a single approval from two years ago.
Okay. And this, just to make it clear in my own mind, now, this request for determination, was it a negative determination? Or was there no determination made from conservation as to whether the act applied to your work or not?
It said... The order is not however determined in the boundaries to any resource areas specifically noted above.
What box was checked on the determination of applicability? Was it just a determination of the wetland resource areas? Or was it a determination that there's a box that would be checked that says, although the work might occur within conservation jurisdiction, it doesn't, you know, it will not alter whether it's that or the other. Basically, it says you don't have to file a notice of intent. So, which box was checked?
It says, accurate the boundaries described referenced plan above and in the abbreviated notice of resource delineation are accurately drawn for the following resource areas bordering vegetated wetlands.
Okay, then, then that... Go ahead, Dave, sorry.
Is there anything... So, do we have a set of plans? Do you guys have a set of plans in front of you?
I do.
Is there any... Does it say 100-foot buffer zone and all activity outside of the 100? Or is there activity within the 100-foot buffer zone?
Here goes...
Here's the line.
It's the flag right here. That's the flag line right here. It goes, oh, this is the flag line right here. Here's the 100-foot buffer.
Yep.
Let me see where the panels are.
All right, let's get a shot.
Yeah, there's the panels over here.
Yep.
And 100-foot buffer is...
It's right on the...
There is a small portion that is in the 100-foot buffer. Nothing within the 50-foot buffer. There is a small portion within the 100-foot buffer.
Then they need an application signed off by the Conservation Commission. That would be a negative determination saying that the work is approved, not the delineation of the line. There's two, that's two different entities. Approval of the line locks in the line, which actually locks in the work being in the buffer zone. That's what you're seeing. So, they need a Conservation Commission permit before they could obtain a building permit.
I think this is the buffer area. It's right on the line.
Isn't it right there, 100-foot?
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, there is, there is a little bit, excuse me, in the 100-foot buffer. So, Dave is saying they're gonna need something from conservation stating that they're okay with that?
That's absolutely correct. An approval of a wetland line, what the gentleman read was that they approved the wetland line through an RDA. What you can do, there's two ways to get a wetland line approved. Through an ANRAD, which is called abbreviated notice of resource area delineation, which is the more costly way to do it, or through an RDA, request for determination of applicability, which is a form that can be used for delineation of a wetland line or it can be used for, we want, you know, basically, in layman's terms, we want you, the Conservation Commission, to not require us to do a notice of intent and give us a negative determination for the work within your jurisdiction, which is a negative determination. And then, it's essentially their permit to work within the buffer zone, you know, for whatever that entails, you know, 20 feet in, 10 feet in, whether it's 20, 2,000 square feet or 20,000 square feet. So, I'm pretty sure that a special permit probably has a requirement that they have to obtain all other local approvals. So, I would say that we, I don't know how we could act on an extension if they've never even applied for the Conservation Commission for the work within the buffer zone. Certainly, you can check with the building inspector. I don't know how he would issue a building permit for work within the buffer zone without approval from conservation.
And didn't the form used to... I mean, I haven't read one of those forms for a while now, but didn't it read where that mark was to be checked off? That the commission basically understands that there is work within the 100-foot buffer zone, but it's as, its nature is such that it does not require the filing of a notice of intent for the work? I mean, that's a...
Yes, there is.
That's a paraphrase of what it used to say.
Yes. No, no, it's never changed. It's been like that for decades.
Okay.
But what Mr. Switzer read to me was only that they approved the wetland line. They have to, if they file an RDA with a full set of plans and said, "We want you to approve the wetland line and we want you to approve the project" with a negative determination, then there'd be more than one box checked off. And the form does allow that. That's not what he explained to me, that I'm hearing, so...
No, that's not what I'm hearing either.
So, that's...
If there's work, if there's work within the buffer zone, it's presumed to affect the wetlands period unless the commission otherwise determines that it does not... Unless the commission determines that it does not or will not affect the wetlands.
And also, with a little bit further review of the plans, there is a 1,465-foot, square foot area of isolated wetlands smacked out in the middle of the solar field. So, we're... So with that alone, it would need conservation.
I would think so.
That would probably need a replication area. I'm not 100%, if there is a replication area around here or not.
It requires the conservation, conservation commission to say that it's not a resource area, and it's not, that work is not going to affect a resource area, wherever, whether it's isolated land subject to flooding, or the actual wetlands, whatever. Bordering vegetated wetlands.
Yeah.
And we don't, they don't have that.
No, there is isolated wetlands in the middle of the field.
I just found it, sorry, 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 I found the RDA, if I could share my screen, I could pull it up. The work described in the request is within the buffer zone as defined in the regulations, but will not alter the areas subject to protecting under the Act. Therefore, said work does not require the filing of notice of intent, this was approved on March 12, 2021.
Okay, problem solved. So we can take the conservation, we can take the conservation commission issue off the table, so I really think that they have to have a building permit for us to act on this, I really do. In a positive manner.
Is that, is that, does that two-year timeframe run to the stormwater permit issued by the planning commission?
Yeah, they're both on the same action, they're both acting on the same document.
So you would have to be requesting, you should be requesting an extension of that also, then?
So, Mr. Chairman.
Right, Dave.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead, Dave.
I would like to make a motion that we consult with town council on whether, if a building permit is issued, whether that automatically extends them, and I really don't, I don't understand how that, I suppose it would, because it'd be the length of the building permit, but I'd like to verify that. So, so I guess where I'm going with this is if they pull a building permit prior to their expiration, it's possible that they may be all set, you know, for whatever the length of that building permit is. I'd like clarification on that. And if they need an extension, I mean, I would, I would be inclined, I wouldn't be inclined to give it to them if they don't have a building permit issued. And I don't, you know, I'm not, it's not clear to me that they have all their ducks in a row to obtain a building permit from the building inspector. So, I mean, don't you have to have an interconnection permit to get a building permit?
That's my answer.
We have that, we've got that. We have an interconnection group, we received it in February.
Okay, so...
So if I may, my issue with it is, is that, I mean, it stayed right here in writing that this thing, you may not be able, may be able to connect in 2027, that's four years from now, okay? So, building permits, unless they're continuously active, go invalid during that period of time. It's asking for a two-year extension. This is a four-year project, I think it should be, I think that special permit should be reapplied for, I think it should be denied at this point and reapplied for, I need the new bylaw. It's kind of how I see it at this point, because of this, this is not like he's going to get, they're going to be connected in a year from now even, and based on this, they won't even give them a date on when it's going to happen. It's a May, maybe 2027. So, I think in all, I know it's kind of a crappy situation, basically, for the proponent, but this is the rock and hard place that EverSource has put them in, unfortunately, and it's really not our issue, our issue is basically, we could either go to extend it or we don't, based on, without any surety that this thing would be done in the next two years.
I mean, there's nothing, there's nothing that would have prevented them from obtaining a building permit. I mean, really. So, you know, I think that would give you a lot stronger case as to, you know, whether the project has been, you know, whether work on the project has been actual and continuous. I mean, you certainly, there's nothing that has prevented you from applying for a building permit, and, you know, why haven't you done it? I mean, it would certainly make your case stronger in terms of whether we grant an extension, and/or whether you're entitled to continue the project, you know, because you have not abandoned it, basically.
Right, I understand that, but again, I don't necessarily think we would be coming for an extension on the special use permit if we have building permits issued, because I don't think that that would be required. The building permit, the special use permit addresses the setbacks and, you know, the conditions and, you know, those aspects of the project that get incorporated into the building permit approval. There would be no additional special use permit, you know, there's all the comments and all the conditions that have been integrated into the plans that get approved by the building inspector. So I don't know what, why would we be, we would be going back to the planning board? Now, if you're telling me that I need to apply for a building permit, that's fine, we can go ahead and do that. I guess, if we do have to go back through the permitting process, you know, we did acknowledge, we did, you know, I understand that you guys did approve and adopt new zoning bylaw with regards to solar, you know, large-scale ground mass solar that would apply to this. We went through, we did a review of your new bylaw, we applied it to our project, and we found that the only areas, and, you know, we put this in the petition, where it wasn't in compliance were the side and rear setbacks. And, you know, given that the majority of the site, you know, is, well, not majority of the site, but the majority, the central part of the site is that wetland that is being placed into permanent conservation because of the, you know, turtle species that is said inhabit there, you know, I think that that renders a majority of the site unusable, which I think is a clear hardship, you know, that we would just go and request a variance for. So, I don't see how the plan would change, and I also, you know, understanding the previous work that went into the project, you know, if it wasn't controversial, like on the setbacks, you know, a couple of years ago, presumably, you know, the same, it wouldn't be controversial going forward too. So I don't understand, I guess, what was gained by having to go through the permitting process again.
Well, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, David.
I'm a little, maybe you can clarify, Mr. Switzer, are you saying that the central portion of the array is protected by natural heritage?
No, I'm saying that the central portion of the site, meaning the site being the parcel outside the wetland area is going to be placed in permanent conservation due to the, you know, we've been working with NHESP, or A, or whatever the endangered species is, you know, to, because of the eastern box turtle that is, you know, presumed to live there.
Oh, so you filed, when did you file a MESA application?
Last year, we're working through all of the conservation and the escrow account and all that with MESA right now, or with the state right now.
You've been working with them for a year?
Yeah.
Wow. Okay, so they're going to put a permanent conservation restriction basically on the field?
Yes.
On like where the field is? How would you account for security fits? You're going to have to have it elevated above the grade?
It'll be outside of the, yeah, there'll be areas where it allows, you know, six inches for the turtles to pass.
Okay. So when you say you only have issues with two property line setbacks, what are we talking about, five feet, 50 feet?
In the side, you have setback, the closest, well, the largest, well, the 24 feet is the largest, I guess, you had 150 feet, we're at 126 feet at the closest. The rear setback is where, you know, the biggest issue, where it's 150 feet, and you got, we approved a 30-foot setback, which was in compliance with the previous zoning code. And I believe that parcel is vacant to the rear.
Is it landlocked, or is it, you know, something that could be developed?
I, just give me a second, I'll take a look, but, I'll start off, sorry.
Depending on what, depending on what the property line is, it's, my guess, it's still all developable. Because Heritage Road comes in over to here, which comes in the backside.
This is all developable.
Right. That's how I see it right now.
I know for a fact that this is developable.
Yeah.
Okay, well...
I know the owner had a...
There's likely to be some turtle habitat back there.
I know, but you're, I think you're making it sound not a big deal kind of a way, you know, 30 feet from 150 to 124 to 150, okay, you know, I'd buy that argument without looking at a plan in front of me, but 30 from 150 to 30 to a property that could be developed, I think that really counters why we have the bylaw in place.
Out of curiosity, what do you consider the front, the front, the one facing Main Street, or is that the rear facing Main Street?
The front's facing Main Street.
The front is facing Main Street, so you're saying you have 349 feet to the nearest dwelling?
Is it dwelling, or is it from the property line?
All right, so let's just go with that, you have 349 feet from the property line?
That's correct.
You have 349 feet from Main Street to the property, this property line?
I don't see it.
See, Davey, we got to get your attention, infiltration basis.
Well, we're not, we're not here to look at the plans, we're not here to approve the plans, we're not here to, there were no modifications to the plans, so, and we're not here to talk about variances, we're not granting variances, we're not here for any of that tonight. Tonight, we are here to discuss the extension of the existing special permit. I feel there's a few unanswered questions that I'd like answered, I'd like to go to, I'd like to talk to the building inspector regarding the requirements to get a building permit. I wanted, I would like to double check with conservation, because the one thing that bothers me is this wetland area, isolated wetland area that's smack dab in the middle of your solar field, your solar field, and for conservation not to want some kind of a replication area for that, which it could be on here, I just opened these plans up a few minutes ago, so I don't personally see a replication area here, but you have 1,500 feet almost, 1,500 square feet of isolated wetlands. So before, I'd like to talk to conservation regarding that, and possibly town council regarding whether you get a building permit if that supersedes the expiration date of the special permit. So, in my opinion, I still think we have a few unanswered questions before we can grant.
Can I make a motion to continue this to our next meeting?
One question, before we move on that motion, when does the permit expire?
July 15th?
They have, well, they have it down as July 15th. Right now, it could be July 15th, it could be a little bit later, we are, we got some...
Do we have a meeting in July that we can get ahead of that 15th? That's what I'm wondering, because the next meeting is...
We have a meeting on July 13th.
Okay, so that's...
The 15th is a Saturday.
Yeah, I'm thinking we go to the 13th, and I'm thinking that they know they need to apply for a building permit. So I think we need to see how that shakes out, and whether they get a building permit through, you know, building inspector and town council, whether we even have to act on it, or we should, you know, at that point, you know, I think it bolsters their case to get an extension, they have a building permit in hand, right?
Yeah, yeah.
I'm suggesting we continue this to the 13th rather than a potential meeting next week that we may not have.
Yeah, well, not only that, is next week, you got a holiday on Monday, and that means only gives you two or three days to get anything done before the 22nd, so I'm in agreeance with you, Dave, we should continue this to the July 13th meeting, that gives two, three weeks to get answers from town council, conservation, building department, and it gives them time to apply for a building permit if that's what they wish to do. Can I get a motion?
I'll revise my motion to continue the request for a special permit for 5/40, where you're at Main Street till July 13th.
We have a motion, do I get a second?
A second, though.
All in favor, roll call, please.
Steve Boucher, yes.
Mark Francois, yes.
Brian Dishamps, yes.
Rick Ellis, yes.
Dave DeWitt, yes.
Unanimous. Gentlemen, I would, we'll see you on the 13th, and we'll continue this until then, and do what you've got to do, and we'll get our answers until then.
Yeah, that sounds great, I appreciate everyone's time tonight and hearing your case, and who should I follow up with at the town, just on the issue with the building permits and kind of figuring out what, where those things lay?
I would go to the building inspector.
I would think it behooves you to file with the building inspector for a building permit to build the project, period. And then we'll see what you have, what you don't have, I would also recommend that, you know, on the 13th, that you come in with a detailed list of what you've accomplished to date, and what you've yet to, you know, what you've yet to receive in order to build this project. I mean, we've heard something about, I guess, endangered species that has to be resolved. I'm still not clear on the stormwater permit, to be quite honest with you.
That's why I need to talk to conservation.
And, you know, there are new, do we have new stormwater regulations also? Since then?
No, no, I think the stormwater regulations are the same, it's just been delegated to conservation and not us.
I certainly would ask for something from conservation as to whether they currently have a stormwater permit to allow this project to go forward. Again, a detailed list of what you've accomplished and what you need to accomplish, and then if you can get a building permit from the building inspector, then that makes your case all and much stronger.
And some sort of interconnection agreement.
We haven't seen it.
That's never going to happen, I mean, apparently he has one, he has something in writing.
Yeah, do you have something in writing from EverSource stating any...
I have a signed interconnection agreement with EverSource that was required to submit for the incentive application.
Okay, if we could see that as well, please.
Sure.
I agree, make your case, I think the more you pile up, you know, the evidence, the better off you are.
Yeah, no, I apologize if I came off as a little unprepared tonight, I honestly, I wasn't expecting to go before you guys this evening, I thought it was going to be next time, next week. So I appreciate you getting me on this agenda to open the conversation dialogue, and I will be, you know, have a much more robust case to present next time.
You got it.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
You guys have a great night, thanks very much.
Thank you. Okay, current planning, there is nothing. Just to give you guys a quick update, we got a couple of town planner applications, a couple of people, we went back to them, and they basically pulled their applications back, they were no longer interested, or they already got other jobs, and we are still actively seeking, we put in ads in Rhode Island and... actively seeking, we put in ads in Rhode Island and Connecticut, and I have also asked the town administrator to run a part-time ad alongside the full-time ad to see if we get any bites with that as well. I guess, you know, looking at it, it's better to get someone qualified as a part-timer, if there's somebody out there that's not having anybody at all, so.
Absolutely, I mean, we can't keep depending on you to spend your days down at Town Hall.
And other than that, Paul is leaving on June 30th, so that makes things even more difficult, he has been training Patricia, I think her name is, and she's catching on quick, but there's a lot to, a lot to it, but she's not gonna have a hold on everything in the next two, three weeks, so.
Jamie?
Yes, sir.
Has the ad actually been run for the part-timer or we're going to?
I requested it just two days ago, so no, I don't, I don't think it's actually been run. I'm requesting it.
Soon as it's better.
Yes, yes.
Soon as it's better.
Yes, agreed, agreed, agreed.
I think, I honestly think we're gonna hit on that better than we are on full timer.
And that is.
Do we have a number?
It's possible.
Do we have a number for that?
What do you mean a number, like a dollar amount?
Yeah, like you have a range for the full-timer, do we, are we advertising a range for the part-timer?
Not at this moment, I just, like I said, I just popped my head in the other day to Town Administrator, he was busy, spoke to the clerk, and I requested it, I still need to follow up with Jamie, but I am going to request that we run two ads in all of the sites that we were on, and.
Okay, I mean, I think, I think we should, if you really wanna try and track somebody, I think we need to at least put some sort of dollar amount out there.
I would agree.
Otherwise, it's just bland, you know, and, you know, I really, you know, there might be somebody part-time and say, you know, it at least should be something of the nature of, you know, pay commensurate with, you know, qualifications and, you know, negotiable, you know, I mean, you know, you gotta lure them in somehow, somebody, right?
Yeah, yeah, agreed. Agreed.
Okay, because truly it's gonna be trying to get, say, if you're gonna get a part-timer, it's somebody with, definitely with, hopefully, somebody with a number of years of experience that can basically come in and hit the ground running.
Hopefully, yes. But right now, I just think we haven't been getting many hits, so if we can put out two ads for two different types of jobs, maybe there's somebody interested in a part-timer that's not interested in the full-time, and we'll see where that leads.
Are there any part-time planners floating around in the other towns that might be interested?
We put it out there.
Well, I mean, the thing is, I mean, a call will do wonders. You know, if there's, if there's somebody that, you know, got a part-time position in one of the other surrounding towns.
I know that Jamie did make a few phone calls, and we were looking at sharing a town planner, and I don't know exactly, I can't tell you exactly what town that is, I know it's one of the surrounding towns, and we were told that they were not interested to share, half of them, half for us, two part-timers, supposedly I'm told that they weren't interested, so.
Okay.
But yeah, that's also another way, that's also another way to look at it. Steve here was gracious enough to represent in Serbet, and he's been speaking with them, hopefully they can also help out in the future with possibilities, but I just wanted to give you a quick update, there isn't much to update, but we are still actively trying.
Hey, Mark?
Yes.
If you could give me a call on the side, I just wanna, you know, as you know, I just work in a lot of towns, and I'd like to talk to you about what towns Jamie reached out to and maybe other potential suitors.
Okay.
That may be the best, that may be the best bet to get a really qualified part-timer, you know, and there's some creative ideas I have to get that part-timer that gets paid well, but that doesn't cost the town a ton.
Okay, we will discuss, Karen.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. The next meeting is potentially Thursday, June 22nd, next Thursday. If anybody has anything else to discuss, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor, roll call real quick.
Steve Boucher, yes.
Mark Francois, yes.
Ryan Dishamps, yes. Rick Ellis, yes.
Dave DeWitt, yes.
Good night, thank you.